All right, we are picking up pretty much where we left off in terms of dealing with questions out of the chat and then I'll also hit some of the class questions. So one of these was ionic compounds with Lewis dot. So the main thing as far as ionic compounds go is for the most part ionic compounds are going to be metals and non-metals. And those are definitely going to be the things that are connected with electrostatic attractions. So that was why before we were talking about the fact that you could also think about ammonia with a positive charge, the ammonium, the ammonium ion and really anything else. There's a nitrate anion. And so while the ammonium ion and the nitrate anion do have covalent bonds inside of them, these are attracted together because of the charge. So it's the charges that would actually hold that particular molecule together. So we would still define that as an ionic compound. But oftentimes you're talking about metals and non-metals. So this is where we can still do things like the Lewis dot symbol for nitrogen, for example. So what we would do in this case is I'm going to grab a periodic table. And as we come back around to this, so nitrogen is in group 5A. So for a Lewis dot symbol, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So I've got five valence electrons. And this is where for Lewis dot symbols, remember there's these three blank spaces? So this would also show nitrogen could have three bonds. Nitrogen could have three bonds. For ionic compounds, though, we would expect nitrogen to form a negative three charge, to have a complete octet, in which case we would then show nitrogen is having all eight valence electrons because with a negative three charge, it does. And that would look something like this. For Lewis dot symbols for metals, since it's right there, I'm going to go ahead and grab aluminum because aluminum just does have a plus three charge. But the neutral form then, because it has three valence electrons, the neutral form would look something like this. And if you want to put, as long as these are not paired, it doesn't matter where they are. So you could have that blank space in any of the different locations and that would be fine. But since aluminum then forms a positive three charge. All we would then show for the Lewis dot symbol is just this because we're showing essentially the removal of the valence electrons. So removal of valence electrons. So yes, aluminum does have more electrons in the next level down, but we wouldn't actually display those because we're trying to just display the valence electrons that it came with. So the question was actually trying to ask like, how do we combine ionic compounds with Lewis dot? And honestly, we don't. Because here's the thing is that if we were really going to talk about ionic compounds, we would be better off showing off ionic lattice, showing off something that looks like these images. So the thing is, is that when you talk about ionic compounds, they form structures, but they're repeating patterns. That's one of the big deals about them. So we actually wouldn't go to look at more with Lewis dot. Lewis dots basically to help us with valence electrons, but ionic compounds aren't just paired, they're in more repeating patterns than that. So that's really all I have to say about that one with Lewis dot and ionic compounds. So now I'm going to scroll all the way back up because my class had some different questions. So I'm going to see what we didn't do. So one of these was dealing ionic compounds and dealing with IDE, but the ammonium chloride is a little bit different. And really that ammonium chloride is only different because this is all non-metals. But ionic. And really, you just need to look out for the ammonium ion. So ammonium is really the exception. When you take a look at your polyatomic ions list, the other, there's only a few of these that are positive. The other one is hydronium. But hydronium doesn't, hmm. We won't be talking about how hydronium forms compounds right now. That's a true statement. It's like, let me say something that actually is true. So while we can still test you on what hydronium is and its formula, we won't actually use hydronium in compounds for right now. Mercury I then is the only other cation and that's a metal. So y'all would be able to recognize the fact that it's a metal and paired with non-metals that would be ionic. So ammonium is actually the only non-metal ionic forming thing you need to be responsible for is just the ammonium ion. Okay, the questions, I don't really understand how bonds work. Okay, is it the two dots? So how, so how, how do basically, how do covalent bonds form and what's going on? So most, actually I'm going to copy these, so I don't have to scroll back and forth so much. Ah, that may. Hold it back down. Okay, so, so the question is, how do bonds form? So a lot of times we demonstrate bonds forming as having one electron from each. So we often think about covalent bonds as sharing electrons. And we're often assuming, we'll say often assuming, one electron from each atom. So that, that is often the assumption that we make when we're talking about a covalent bond in between atoms, very, very often. And usually that's true. There is another case, though. So we didn't get into this one, but basically boron is what we refer to as naturally electron So boron only has, boron is satisfied with an, with eight electrons. But what actually can happen is boron can form more complicated compounds. But the thing is, is that in order for boron to form a more complicated compound, it doesn't have any electrons to bring to the party. Like it's, it's got some, but the hydrogens already have them. So in order for there to be a bond now between the boron and the nitrogen, what has to happen is the nitrogen essentially has to donate its electrons to the bond because boron just can't do it. Like it just doesn't, doesn't have anymore. It's not that it's not interested, it just doesn't have the resources. So in that case, all of the electrons can come from one. So this, though, is a special case. So this one is called a coordinate covalent bond. And that is where all electrons come from one atom. So it's possible, we tend to, but it is, it is a special case. So if you've looked at all of the covalent bonds ever, you would find many more covalent bonds where electrons come from both atoms is much, much more common, but definitely possible to have it go the other way, where both of the electrons come from the same place. So either is possible, either is possible. But we do usually talk about sharing electrons because usually they're coming from both. Do hydrates form crystals? Can they ever be gel-like? So this is a really kind of a fun question. So I have to say that especially because of this lovely word "all," I've got to go with, I'm not sure, or I don't know. Because one of the weird things is, is that, so one of the things that does happen with hydrates, and you've, you've probably seen this, you might have seen this before in your kitchens. If you guys have ever had like brown sugar in the canister, but the brown sugar starts to like stick to itself a lot, that's basically because the brown sugar's absorbed a lot of water and then it clumps together. So you do definitely get that effect with the crystals. And then the hard thing is, is that as far as gel-like, when you form crystals from proteins, so pure proteins do also form crystal structures, but you would probably refer to these as gel-like. I'm not going to Google this because I didn't do it in advance and I'm a little. The couple of times where I've been looking for something that I know what it is, if I don't get specific enough, usually I accidentally get things like a K-pop band, which is not a problem, but we don't need to go down around a rabbit hole. So oftentimes, when we, so when we say crystals, we actually are trying to talk about this repeating lattice structure over and over and over again. It usually is something that is physically hard to the touch for the most part, but there are protein crystals and those can actually be like kind of jiggly. So kind of gel-like. So this is a fabulous question that I tried to answer, but I know I didn't do a great job. What's the difference between a molecule and a covalent ionic compound? What's the difference between empirical and formula in a molecule? Okay, definitions. So, so here's the game. Molecule means covalent bonds. Hold it together. And I'm saying it because we talk about this thing. So when we talked about two hydrogens together, that's a molecule. When we talk about water, water is also a molecule. Covalent bonds hold it together. We could talk about the ammonium ion and what holds the ion together are also covalent bonds. So, so these are all slightly different things, but these are all molecules. These are all molecules. Now, if we wanted to talk about what a compound is, a compound is two or more different elements. So from what we already drew, water counts as a compound. It's got both oxygen and hydrogen. That's a compound. The ammonium ion counts as a compound. It's got nitrogen and hydrogen in it. But ionic things like sodium chloride also have two different elements. Manganese, two sulfides. ionic compound, two different elements. Iron three chloride, compounds. So, but what you often hear, because we can differentiate better, when we talk about something that's ionic, ionic things have to have two different elements, at least, because they're connected to, by electrostatic attractions. So you always hear ionic compound because that's essentially always correct, always correct. And then you usually hear covalent molecule because that's also always correct. Molecules by definition are held together by covalent bonds. It just so happens, though, that that's not, that at least one of these is not exclusive because you could call something also a covalent compound. And that's also okay, but you would just be excluding things like this. So you'd be excluding things that have the same element connected to, by a covalent bond. But covalent compounds, there's a lot of them. So it's not that they're not real, it's just that for the sake of saying terms that then include everything we'd like to include, we usually go ahead and say covalent molecule, ionic compound. So those are how you typically say them, even though technically being a compound doesn't have to have anything to do with how it's put together. So a compound doesn't really need to be ionic or covalent, it's just a compound because it's got two different elements together. But there's just typical ways we say those things. Difference between molecule, covalent ionic compound, I did that part. What's the difference between empirical formula and a molecule or molecular formula? Okay. So when we talk about molecular formulas, we are describing how many things are there. So this is hydrogen peroxide. This has two hydrogens and two oxygens. We just talked about water. It's got two hydrogens and one oxygen. Trying to think of things that are more complicated. We could do benzene, C6H6, it's got six hydrogens and six carbons. Those are all molecular formulas. Empirical is essentially that lowest ratio. So if I wanted the empirical formulas for these, now my, I'm going to put this, these versions in red. So my hydrogen peroxide would just be HO, my C6H6 would just be CH, but the water would in fact still be H2O because there's no way to make that simpler, right? I can't, the lowest ratio is already there. It just so happens to be the actual molecule. We often also use empirical formulas for ionic compounds because ionic compounds always use, always use the empirical formula. So anytime you're putting together an ionic compound, you're always going to use the empirical formula, the lowest ratio you can go. For some cases, can a molecular formula be the same as the empirical formula? Yes, we talked about water. Are molecular formulas only for covalent compounds? Yes. So is the molecular formula only for covalent compounds and don't exist for ionic? Essentially, yes. So that's going to go back to that idea that molecules mean covalent bonds. So you're only going to have molecular formulas for things that have covalent bonds. So yes, only molecular formulas for molecules, yes. Regarding Lewis structures, how do you know when you have to use single, double, or triple bonds to demonstrate the shared electrons? Okay, so this actually has a lot to do with following the list of, and so this is basically how, how do you know when to use different kinds of bonds? So this list of how to do, of how to build molecules, I got from Dr. Deekman years ago. But the thing that I really like about this is, is that it's very methodical and here's what you do, here's the order that you do them in, and here's how you know. So what we'll go ahead and do is we'll go ahead and do an example. Y'all might have done this one in class. We'll do carbon monoxide. And actually, what I'm going to do too is move this over a little bit. There we go. Okay, so we're going to do carbon monoxide. The first thing says to count the number of valence electrons for all atoms. Carbon, I was hoping I'd find a periodic table real soon. There we go. Carbon is in group 4A, oxygen is in group 6A. So this is four plus six or 10 electrons. I would change the number of electrons depending on the charge, but this is neutral. Then I'm going to arrange the atoms, that carbon goes next to the oxygen. There is no middle since there's only two of them. Connect all atoms by single bonds, no atom left behind. And that you use two electrons and bonds, so there's eight electrons left over. Then it says complete octets for outermost electrons, outermost atoms using electron pairs. I've got eight electrons, 2, 4, 6, 8. There's also an argument to be made that since oxygen's more electronegative, I should have put six on the oxygen, but honestly, there's not enough electrons to go around. So we're going to have to fix this. So it's got information for if extra electrons remain, add electron pairs to central atom, but we don't have that problem. Then it says if short of electrons, use lone pairs to form multiple bonds. So that's actually what we're going to do. So basically, I have methodically figured out how many electrons that we have, how many electrons we're allowed to use, and now I'm going to start sharing electrons. Well, in general, carbon's better at sharing electrons because it's less electronegative. So I'm going to go ahead and make carbon share first. And when we're looking at this now, my oxygen does actually have a complete octet now. It's got two lone pairs and a double bond, but the carbon doesn't. So since my carbon still needs more electrons, we're going to make the oxygen also share. And then now I've got carbon with six shared electrons through the bonds, two more in the lone pair, so that's eight. The oxygen's got six shared electrons in the bond, two more from the lone pairs, that's also eight. So this is a valid Lewis structure. The other thing we can now do is formal charge. So if I take a look at my carbon, my carbon brought four valence electrons to the party. And then I have six electrons in the bond, but I only have half of those because of the sticks. And then two electrons, so that's four minus three minus two, so that's negative one. My oxygen brought six valence electrons to the party. It also has six electrons in that triple bond. We count half of them for the oxygen and two for the lone pair, that's a positive one. So typically then we're like, ah, negative one, positive one, we should share more. So the theory then is like, well, if we share more, we'd go ahead and take that carbon and share like this. The thing, though, is that this won't work because now I have an expanded octet for oxygen. So no, bad, wrong. So oxygen cannot have an expanded octet. So even though we could draw things that might give us better formal charges, we can't do an expanded octet on oxygen. So this previous one that we did is going to be the best that we can do. But that's essentially how you know, so the way you know you need multiple bonds is that you've placed all of your electrons, but you don't have complete octets yet. So that's how you know that you need multiple bonds is you're trying to get to those complete octets, but you just can't quite make it because there's not enough electrons to go around. So you've got to make them share extra. Because that's what the bonds are, right? The bonds are all about sharing electrons. And so if you don't have enough, they need to share some more. Where did my list go? Was the difference between a molecule and a compound or an ionic compound and difference between empirical formula and molecule? You guys are on the same page. Can you explain the graph curve with energy and nuclear distance you went over in class? Yeah, absolutely. So in general, so I'm actually going to end on this one because how do I know when to use prefixes or not use prefixes? Prefixes are for non-metals. So prefixes are for covalent compounds, for covalent molecules, bleh. They might just be molecules or covalent molecules. And they're also used for hydrates. So for example, if we had something slightly different, just for funsies, we'll just assume that this is a thing. Two, why not? So if I'm trying to name this, which I, this is probably not a real hydrate, but we can at least practice some naming. So this is going to be then iron three, because I know my chloride only has a negative one charge. There's three of them, so the iron has to have a negative, has to have a positive three to balance the three negative one charges that the chlorine brings. So I name that first part as an ionic compound. Then I do in fact use then di and hydrates. So I do actually go ahead and use the prefixes for the hydrates. Otherwise, we're just using them, otherwise we use prefixes for covalent molecules and that's all. So you might notice that I don't use the prefix in the ionic form of the compound. So that iron three chloride, no prefixes, right? So no prefixes in the iron three chloride. You do use a prefix, though, with the hydrate. Essentially, you use prefixes when charges can't help you. So you use prefixes when charges cannot help you. When there's no other way to tell you what's going on, you use the prefixes. So with the periodic table, you'd know that chlorine has a negative one charge. Iron, you're going to just tell me what the charge is then on it, so there's no prefixes required. Iron three chloride is held together by charges, that's what you need to know about it. You don't need to tell me how many chlorines there are because I know from the fact that I'm going to have iron with a plus three, chlorine with a negative one, the whole thing is neutral. So the logic of how things go together means I don't need prefixes for ionic interactions. Molecular, on the other hand, I don't know how many waters this is, you got to tell me. So there, there's no particular trick for knowing how many waters there are, you have to tell me how many waters there are. So that's why we use the prefix. Same game with things like carbon monoxide versus carbon dioxide, you got to tell me. I don't know because this isn't, these aren't put together by charges. Both carbon monoxide and carbon dioxide are both real compounds. They exist. The only way to know which one you have is to tell me with a prefix. We've done formal charge, so I, part of why I did formal charge on that carbon monoxide earlier. Okay, the graph curve with the energy and the distance, sure. So this is, so this curve looks like this. This is distance. This is energy. So when we look at this graph, it looks something like this-ish. And yes, your textbook has better pictures. So essentially, this is when you have, over here, so this is distance being large. So this is the distance between, this is the distance between nuclei. So over here, these are so far apart, they basically can't feel, that can't interact with each other. So far apart, that they cannot interact with each other. So they are, there's no interactions with them whatsoever. So they have some energy inherently as atoms, but they are terribly far apart, no interactions. Then on the other hand, we could take those same two atoms and we could squish them together. Whoopsies. We could squish them together. We could squish them so close together that they are in fact too close, too Klaus, too close, so that the positive nuclei repel. Because that's actually what's happening here, is suddenly the energy is very, very high and just keeps getting higher because you are smushing together two positively charged things that do not want to be put together. So those nuclei then start to repel each other and that's what, why that energy goes up. Then down here in the bottom, this is going to be that Goldilocks just right area. So this is where your two atoms are in fact sharing electrons, so they're close enough to each other to interact, and they're just the right distance to share electrons, and this is also our covalent bond. So that's what that graph is looking at. It's looking at your covalent bond has a certain amount of energy. And so this notion that you have different places on the graph and what the graph really means, but the idea is, is that the bottom of that well, the bottom of that graph does demonstrate that the covalent bond is more stable. So, so the covalent bond is basically more stable or lower in energy than individual atoms. And that there is such thing as too close. So that's the other thing in here is so you can have them be far apart, they have some sort of energy, you can also have them right next to each other, and then you get internuclear repulsion where the two nuclei are positive and you've smushed them together. So hopefully this helps with that graph. I do usually think about this graph as being in three parts to try to demonstrate why you have all the different pieces. But you can, you can look at the fact that there's going to be places on the graph where the two atoms are coming closer together, but they haven't formed the covalent bond yet. yet, because you could have them be theoretically any amount of space in between those two nuclei, and you'd get different answers. So that, I think, is the last question that I had from class, and I think that covers all the things that I got from y'all during the exam review. So hopefully, this helps. Again, just keep practicing, keep working on stuff, you can do it, I believe in you. Good luck, y'all.